Good evening. I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting, June 25th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Deerfield Town Offices. Agenda for tonight is potentially look at minutes from previous meetings, review mail, take some public comment, and then we have a continuation of a public hearing, a site plan review for 141 Greenfield Road, which was continued from the June 3rd meeting, and it's a proposal to an addition, add an addition to the animal hospital. Then under new business, we have a public hearing, proposed amendments to the floodplain district zoning bylaw to clarify uses that are permitted, prohibited, or permitted by special permit in the floodplain district. We have an A and R for 34 Stillwater Road, which is to split a lot into two lots, then we'll take up any business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting. We'll set a date for the next meeting and adjourn.
It'd be nice to have seen them before tonight.
Any...
Yeah, it does seem really fine.
Any additions or subtractions from this agenda? If someone can help me, we had a meeting, a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Planning Board. It seemed like there was something at the end of that that we said we had to discuss at this meeting. Wasn't there?
I don't know.
I wasn't there.
All right, so if we can't think of anything, maybe we'll think of something during the meeting. Do you have any notes of that?
No, I just have them from the third.
Yeah, I'll look at my notes during the meeting. All right. Paul Ellis told us he wouldn't be able to be here, and we don't have minutes from the last meeting unfortunately. Rachel will probably review the mail, and we can get to that at the end. Is there any public comment? Does anybody have anything to say that's not on the agenda tonight? Any quick comment from anybody in the public? Here we none. We'll start with the old business, which is a continuation of our site plan review for 141 Greenfield Road.
Are you 141 Greenfield Road?
I would like to open the continuation of the public hearing by reading the notice that was in the paper back in March, actually, is when it started. The Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 25th, 7 o'clock, in the Deerfield offices, to act in compliance with the zoning, town zoning bylaws, section 5400, on a site plan review application submitted by MIB Construction and Custom Cabinetry on behalf of Storemaster Funding LLC, for a proposed 2,560 square foot addition to the VESH Building, a veterinary facility located at 141 Greenfield Road. Copies of the proposed project application have been available at the town offices during normal business hours. Any person interested, wishing to be heard, should appear at the time and place designated. So, at the last hearing, we had a peer review person, and we had the VESH folks, and they were going to get together, and there has been a lot of communication back and forth. So, you want to give us an update and tell us...
Certainly.
...who you are and what you're doing.
Yes. My name is Meredith Savage. I'm with SWCA, and we are representative of the applicant. And you will have to forgive me, I am, or I hope you'll forgive me, please. I'm a last-minute addition. We had the person who typically would have been here tonight was unable to make it. So, you'll, if you could tell me...
Which is Kevin McCaffrey?
Kevin, okay.
So, we all remember, we heard from Kevin last meeting.
So, just...
If you could talk right in.
Okay, certainly. So, if I'm repeating anything that you've, information that you've already got, just tell me to hush and I'll... There were some corrections. I think that you have the response to the peer review, and if not, I can go over it. The peer reviewer basically caught some discrepancies in our... Did I, I haven't signed yet.
No, yeah, okay.
So, I will.
Yep.
Caught some discrepancies in the site plan application, and we've made a few changes on the site plan as well.
So, actually, if you could just slow down for a second here?
Certainly.
Because I think...
I'm still buzzing. I drove in from Hyannis, and I just made it with two minutes to spare. So, it's...
Yeah.
I still have road noise in my head.
I have some letters, but...
I believe...
So, do we have the updated?
I think so.
We don't.
It's dated June 18, and it was sent in, I think, either yesterday or the day before. It would have been a response, a letter, and an updated narrative. There, that's the updated plan.
March 13th, this is stamped.
Oops. Well, then it is not. This one is...
Greg.
524.
Yeah, Greg isn't even...
So, you got, you got all the updated plans.
I did.
So, Greg is our, Greg is our peer reviewer.
Oh, great.
And you sent a letter dated, like, a couple days ago.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
That was in response to their June 18th.
Correct.
So, actually, I would, it would be really sweet if we had that and...
Yep.
And we don't, huh?
And we don't.
How come we don't?
It's not copied. I don't have a copy of it. I've got it on my...
I had some back and forth with Priscilla, I thought. Do you have any copies of your letter?
I was just looking. I have the June 18th one for that copy.
Because it would really, it was a good...
It would help.
It was a good summary. Made me feel good.
You need the June 18 letter?
Uh...
I can, I can certainly give you this, well, if I give you this copy, then I won't have anything to refer to.
Do you have the June 18th one?
Well, I have your June 18th one.
Okay, great.
When was yours dated? Your response to theirs?
It was last Thursday.
Because, um, anybody have it? No?
Well, I can...
Because basically, he was saying that they covered everything.
Yeah.
So, I kind of want to cut to the chase to some of this. There's a couple issues we might want to talk about, but a lot of it, we don't need to. Oh, I'm sorry. Here it is. All right, so I have it actually clipped to this. So...
Oh, good.
So, on June 8th, on June 20th, Greg Henson from our, from the Berkshire Design Group sent a letter basically saying that your June 18th covered all the things that we were looking for.
Excellent, okay.
So, maybe we can highlight some of them for everybody.
Sure. The, I think one of the main discrepancies was that we had erroneously put the size of the building as to, or the addition as 2,560 square feet, and the corrected square footage is 3,200 square feet. And so, there were a couple places that that was, and those were corrected. And there were a few other scribner errors that we corrected. And it's, one of them was pedestrian safety will be maintained on the site and egressing. There's no pedestrian egress from the site as was, and so that was changed on the plan also. In effect, is that what is happening, this is the second part of Phase 2, and we have an addition that's going on to the building. It's not, other than the fact that the building is, is being enlarged by the, by the addition, it's not substantively changing the viewscape. It's within character of the original building. It is not affecting pedestrian or vehicle circulation. And I think, this isn't me. Oh, my apologies. And the, the stormwater, the hydrology on the site will be increased slightly, as you would expect with the addition of the building, but that's being directed into the stormwater facilities that are on site. And, let's see, and I'll just read from this. The two models were, for the stormwater, were review, were revised, and it, it just provides the routing details of the detention basin outlets. And there is also, one of the things that the peer reviewer brought up was a discrepancy in the hydrocad or the hydrology calculations, and there was an unaccounted for 750 square feet, and that difference, or that 750 square feet, accounts for an earlier phased addition. And the hydrology accounts for the entire roof area of the, of the, of the building, the full building, and it's now being, and it's routed to the detention basin, which is down in here. And these revised plans, I think, have corrected, have the correct square footage on them.
All right. And I think some people on the planning board remember there was some, I think it was paving and some other things that were done...
Without review.
I believe didn't come for site plan review a few years ago. And so, all the new calculations are based on the actual covered, all the covered...
Right, all the impervious services.
The impervious services now. So, kind of a little bit of makeup, I think.
And I think that is it. It is also corrected, the fact that it erroneously stated in here. Someone flipped it in terms of, for the Conservation Commission, they said a positive determination was issued, and they probably had a dyslexic moment, and that was supposed to be a negative determination, the entire project, or I mean, the, the project will be within the buffer only. And the Conservation Commission issued a negative determination on impact.
All right, Greg, can you just, maybe just come up and just kind of give a quick review of, yeah, just if you could speak into the microphone there?
Thanks.
And actually, um...
I can't find it. I don't have it.
Any chance someone wants to take...
Yeah, notes.
Minutes?
Fine. I'm just terrible at it. I got it. I got it. I'm on it. Here I am, right here.
I'd say Vice Chair.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
How fast can you type?
Very, very fast.
And then we have the backup. You can just refer to the backup documents, which I'll give you, so. So, yeah, so there was a, the original submission, Berkshire Design Group on June 3rd sent a letter to S...
SWC.
SW, SWCA.
You guys have one letter too, I think.
Who then on the 18th responded. And then Greg has a letter from the 20th. If you would, maybe just highlight your findings for us.
The 20th letter, which I don't have a copy of.
Oh, I do have a copy of it.
Yeah.
But my findings basically were that, in comparison with pre-development, which was when there was nothing built on the site, versus the, the second go-around, the stormwater peak flows reduced to the control point, which is the stream. The way that happened was when, when we designed things, we have a factor of safety. We don't, we don't build out to the maximum flow rate of the pre-development. So, they designed the whole build-out site into this detention basin, which had excess capacity, and they also did not, they did not exceed the pre-development runoff from the site. So, even with, with the new addition, they, they were still below the pre-development numbers as far as runoff to the stream, which is impacts to the downstream properties. So, there is no adverse impact to the downstream properties over when it was not developed at all. As far as the detention basin goes, because of the addition, they're not running the stormwater from the addition into any, like, mitigation except for the detention basin. So, that, that is by default going to increase. It still contains the two-year through the 25-year storm. It overtops a spillway in the 50- and 100-year storm, which it did before, which it does now, before this addition's put on. But it'll only increase the 50-year storm by three-quarters of an inch, and the 100-year storm by less than an inch. And even with that taken into account, the control point, which is a stream again, still has less of a flow than it did before any development. And that's basically what I, what I've found in my review.
It's kind of remarkable.
That's what we like to hear for stormwater, then.
That is remarkable. It's better than it was.
Right. Because the stormwater detention basin is doing its job.
Doing its job.
It's not better than it is now, but, but it's still under what it was.
What it was.
Okay, so I make that clear.
Yep.
Any questions, comments from public? Questions, comments from planning board members? So, there is a, so we do need the new...
I can leave you this copy?
Site plan review. All right.
That is the revised addition.
So, was that...
And would you like the full plan set as well?
Yes, well, yes. And so, we need to, in our decision, put all the dates and revised dates and everything and things, so. But, but there should have also been submissions to the town hall. We should have got stamped copies, so I'm not sure what, you don't know about that, huh?
I am really, I apologize again. This was, as I said, this was last minute, but I did not have a chance to...
All right, well, you can tell Kevin we'll be looking for them.
Okay, so, we need to bring another one by and get it stamped, the revised edition of both the planned set and this, and get it stamped by the town clerk.
Yes, so we need at least...
I'll tell Kevin to come by.
I mean, this, we always go back and forth, but at least two or three of these copies. Planning Board and then the building inspector, who's, then, because the next step is that the building inspector will look at this plan to make sure it's built to the plan.
Maybe a better thing would be for us to get those copies run off and bring everything by tomorrow in one group, and just leave them with the town clerk?
Yep.
So, you'd like, how many of the site plan review? And how many of the plans? Three?
I think we have the electronic copy and then two physical copies.
Two.
That way, the planning board can keep one, and the building inspector gets one, and then an electronic one in case someone else needs one.
Okay, and two.
And the same with the plan, yeah.
Got it. We will make sure those come by tomorrow.
That seems satisfactory.
Thank you.
And it looks like we did get a check. I'm not always sure how we determine the...
Oh, that should be, a copy should be in here if you got a check, typically.
Oh, okay, there was the fee, and then there was the fee for the peer review. That's what this is. All right, so we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, see, this is what I always wondered about. How did we get a fee if we don't know what the disturbed land is?
She said 3,200. Did you say the revised footprint of the addition was 3,200?
The revised, yes, 3,200 square feet.
Yeah, because, because the fee is based on disturbed land, and it was $256. That might have been based on the other number.
So, does it sound like we're lacking, and we need to provide a little more money?
So, the, yeah, okay, that's where the 256 came from, what it said. So, then it's the difference between 320 and 256. Is that what you're doing? Wow.
What is, is the fee, $10 per thousand?
All right, so, yeah, let's work that out with the town clerk. And I don't think Priscilla's in on Wednesdays, you know?
She is. She was here today.
Yeah, I got some emails. So, also, Priscilla in the zoning office.
Okay, she'll calculate the new fee.
Kevin's, I think, worked with her before too, so, yeah, she should be able, and I'll try to communicate with her why the difference here too.
Oh, actually, yeah, that would be good. So, I should probably give her, one of us will give her a call ahead of time, so we can bring the check.
Otherwise, I think all the other site plan review things, it's all just an addition to the existing building.
Actually, what we'll do...
I don't think we had any issues.
Is, since we're going to be giving you a revised copy, we'll go ahead and put your final letter in here too, and then you'll have it all together.
Yep, that'd be great.
Okay.
Well, no, I thought you, that's already dated, isn't it, isn't that?
It's just dated June 2019. Doesn't matter. Oh, yes, this letter is dated June 18th. I was just saying, we could also add in his reply on top of it.
All in one place, that's good.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing else, then we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, 6-0-0.
I'm almost there. Just kidding.
All right, so, actually, Priscilla was very smart, and actually wrote up a quick site plan review decision in case we were able to decide on this tonight. We would need to fill in some, some dates and things. But the main document is the date of the plan, which was March 5th was the original, and then whatever the revised one ends up being, which is today, I guess, or... And then the accompanying documents is the, is the, is the plan itself.
I'll sell this, no? Do we need that? That's not for that.
Well...
Nope.
We wrote up, we got this written up, so...
Yeah, so it'll be fine.
And we have a signature page. So, is there any discussion, or does anyone want to make a motion to approve the plan for an addition to the veterinary emergency and specialty hospital?
I'll make that motion to approve the site plan, has been revised.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? So, if we put in the new dates, which will be, what, there should be an actual, there needs to be an actual date, not just a month.
All right, we will add in what, we can, we can make the date, today's date, then?
Yeah, that would be sufficient. And then, is there a date on that plan?
I will tell you. Yes, it's dated 5/24/19, and I believe that that better be changed, and it should say 6/24/19. So, I will make sure that that gets changed as well.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to approve the plan dated yesterday, and then the, or today, let's say, because the plan might be dated today, for an addition to the veterinary emergency and specialty hospital, subject to the following conditions, and actually, we didn't have no conditions.
We have no conditions.
And last month, we didn't have any conditions, right?
Yeah, okay.
Good. All those in favor of approving the plan, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, 6-0-0. I should have started the meeting by saying, we do have a quorum, six out of the seven planning board members are here, and I believe at least five or six of us were here at the last meeting, so we're all eligible to vote on this.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will pass out the signature page, so we can actually take care of this, and then we'll give you this when we get those plans and the last of the fees paid.
Excellent. Thank you.
You could pass on the, the information, is that we would like to see a better sign down near the road.
Oh, yeah.
A better sign?
Yeah, we, the towns received several complaints that they can't find the animal hospital, especially at night.
There was a letter in the paper.
I will make sure that gets relayed to the client.
Greg, thank you very much for pushing each other. I saw a bunch of emails there, making sure things get followed up on.
We went back and forth a few times. We got it all ironed out.
Sometimes that's what it takes.
No, that's really great. That was, also to see it, like, the email train.
All right.
We're done?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set.
I have to say, one other comment, just generally not, but it is, I never under, I always would, I would like to see, at some point, when it's always the engineers that present, like, your comment about the sign, it's not, I mean, they can review it, but it is, it is an opportunity for us to meet the business owners. And I know this one went on and on and on, but...
I think that, one of the things with this, Rachel, is that the applicant was, is basically the contractor, and the people who actually own that aren't in this area. They're not, they're not even at the facility, so...
No, I know. And I'm not, I, I feel like, so many times, it goes on and on and on. I could hardly expect that they wouldn't want somebody else to, to push it along. I get that. But we, we had a hard time at certain points getting signatures from whoever was, because their name is not on the...
Exactly.
Whose name is on the, the application. It shows up a couple ways.
Sure does.
So, it's just a little, the lack of clarity was complicated. That complicated this, this pretty straightforward proposal, application.
So, I'd like to go into the new business and open the public hearing, and I will read what was in the public hearing notice. Propose floodplain bylaw pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 48, S5. The Town of Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Deerfield Town Hall, on the proposed amendments to the floodplain district zoning bylaw. The proposed amendments update the floodplain regulations and clarify the uses that are permitted, prohibited, and permitted by special permit in the floodplain district. The full text of the floodplain bylaw can be found on the Town of Deerfield website, and paper copies can be obtained at the Deerfield Town Clerk's Office during normal business hours. And this was posted in the record of, the newspaper record, the recorder, a couple times in advance. And so, the public hearing is now open, and we have some hard-working guests who are going to help, help walk through this.
There you go.
Is that fair to say?
Do you want to go with the A and R, because this will probably be lengthy?
Yeah. Do you want to do that?
Well, I asked for, I asked for things about the agenda earlier, and no one said anything.
I don't know, I didn't.
And I just opened the public hearing.
Yeah, I know, but there's a time for the public hearing, and I think we've done that in the past, where we'll open it, and then we'll go on.
All right, I'm just, I don't disagree. But there's also people here for the floodplain, so I'm not sure.
Who's here for the A and R?
I'm here for what I said.
We have, we have two things... We have, we have, uh, two things before us tonight, we have the floodplain bylaw changes, and we have an, an A and R, um, so if you are willing to tuck this in in the midst of our hearing, that would be great.
What I said is, I think the floodplain thing, well, there'll be a lot of discussion, the A and R will be fairly quick, and we could move those people along, that's all. Now, we've done that in the past. Yeah, I, the mic wasn't, I'm sorry.
Well, the mic's right there, so if you could actually talk into it, and if you could make a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we should...
To hold the public, because we opened the public hearing, I wish I'd said it before I did that, but, so just say...
Well, a lot of times, you open it because we have a time, day, uh, a time to open it, and that's what I thought you were doing, John.
So now, if you can just say, we're gonna interrupt the public hearing.
We're gonna interrupt the public hearing to listen to the A and R.
So, A and R about thirty-four Stillwater Road, if you can just give us a quick review of what that is, and do we have the plans here?
They are right here.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Frank Baranowski, um, Chip's my dad, he owns thirty-four, I live at forty-four. My brother lives at thirty-eight.
Here, speak, Gary, I didn't hear anything. John, can you turn up the mics at all?
Hi, my name is Frank Baranowski. I live at forty-four Stillwater, I'm representing my dad, Chip Baranowski, as most of you know him, at thirty-four. My brother, my brother's at thirty-eight, and, uh, there's subdividing up back lot, basically. And then give it to each of us.
So could you describe where the property is?
Uh, Stillwater Road, right before the condos, um, maybe tenth of a mile past the corner of Lee and Stillwater. So basically, my father, my father bought the entire lot there, the entire square, back in the seventies. He gave my, gave me a parcel at forty-four, my brother a parcel at thirty-eight. Now that he's getting older, the land behind is basically, uh, landlocked, as far as building, so he's just gonna subdivide it and give it to each of us.
So you're not, you're not creating any building lots?
No.
You're just dividing the land, the backland?
Right.
So again, just looking for the new lines, can you, can you come up and show us? And Dan, Dan Warner did this for you?
Yes, yes, sir.
Because usually, they, we can have...
So, show us which ones are the new property lines.
This is the new property line? These are the two new lots?
So, so this was already here?
Yep, that's me.
Alright, so that's, so this was all, this was all one?
So, so Christopher's gonna own from here to here, and you're gonna own from here to there?
Yes.
So you're really doing away with these lines?
And just creating one line down the middle?
So, so I guess that's, do you wanna do that all at the same time?
Sure.
Because right now, if, if we sign this, then all these lines stay.
As far as property transfer, isn't stopped to transfer over to the, uh, the, uh, the registry?
Alright, so, so I mean, so we can...
Because it looks like what you've done, well, parcel A and parcel B are just being added on to one eleven?
And, yeah, yes.
Okay, I can't say I'm clear yet, well...
Yeah, I mean, I'm clear, but I, I don't think, I don't think the document is clear.
But was this line already here?
Yes.
Yeah.
This was one big chunk in the seventies. I built a house, my dad gave me this section.
Okay.
Okay.
My brother built a house, he got this section.
Right.
That leaves a T shape.
So he left that right away off of Stillwater?
Oh, so this has been there, so we're not creating this, this was already there?
Yeah.
So then it's really just, this line is really on there?
But he's, this is dividing it, but what I think John was asking is, do you wanna eliminate this line and have all of this be your land? Because the way this plan is, if we sign it, this is always gonna be there. Yes, you will own that, and yes, you will own this, but it's two separate parcels of land. And you can be taxed at a different rate, if it's all one lot, then it would be different.
For right now, we'll just go with his plan.
Alright.
He's on vacation, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're gonna kinda hold on to the, right away?
If you don't change this now, you would have to pay another fee to come back and do this, and you will also be, in the meantime, pay, be paying higher taxes, because this is a separate parcel of land.
Yes. Alright, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, it's, I mean, the fee's a hundred bucks, it's not a, a big...
What's that?
Actually, to take away a, um, line doesn't, well, it's a hundred dollar fee, that's all.
Right.
But it'll be a couple lines, so it'll be...
It's weird that Dan didn't...
No, actually, all that he's adding is this one right here.
Yeah.
Because this was one parcel, and these two are already subdivided.
Yeah. Alright. So that's all that this is asking for, so that's, that's all we can vote on, is it, uh...
Sure.
So it's an existing parcel that's being broken into two?
Well, I move that we approve the A and R for Frank J. Baranowski at, uh, was it, on Stillwater Road?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain? Six zero zero. You have the Mylar to sign, and we'll sign a couple of these.
Yeah, sign it down there.
Twenty-fifth, yeah, still the twenty-fifth, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-fifth.
How many of these maps, John, you want a couple of them signed?
Yeah, we should sign and get four of them here, that's too cold. Actually, if we give you the Mylar in one paper, and then if we keep two papers, signed copies, so we should get, you can sign three of those paper copies, that'd be good.
What's that?
Sign that one that's under Max's, when you've done with this one.
Oh, could you sign this, please? Sorry, I didn't, I, I just, I got you down as public, but we're...
There's more, huh?
Mm, just, yeah, there's one more.
Alright, we can, we just want to...
I think we've got plenty, just, I have the rubber bands.
There you go.
Here.
Thank you.
You as well.
Alright, thank you for your patience, back to the... Rachel?
Yeah.
Public hearing for the floodplain, uh, proposed floodplain bylaw. Alright, Chris, you wanna lead this, or?
Sure. Hi, everybody, I am, uh, Chris Curtis, I'm a consultant to the town, uh, working on various planning and zoning issues, and, um, I'm gonna take you through the basics of, uh, the proposed floodplain zoning changes. There are copies of the bylaw and a fact sheet that go with it, here on the table, if you haven't grabbed one of those, you'll have them, and there, for anybody that might be interested, we've got copies of the actual FEMA floodplain maps on the table here as well. Those are not for, for distribution, but just for, for reference. So the purpose of this, uh... Purpose of this bylaw change is to try to protect people and property from the damaging effects of floods, um, to prevent, uh, water pollution, um, to protect the natural flood storage areas, um, in town, and, and the natural flow of the, of the rivers in the community. Deerfield has an existing floodplain zoning bylaw, um, which is very outdated. I think it dates back to the nineteen eighties, so it's almost forty years old at this point. And, um, the bylaw really doesn't, um, adequately protect the floodplain or really provide much, um, information or guidance about what is allowed or not allowed in the floodplain. It also doesn't really, um, attempt to address the, um, increase in, in flood frequency and severity that have already been seen and are expected with climate change, and it doesn't really, um, address the needs or standards of the National Flood Insurance Program. So the floodplain district is, um, shown on the maps prepared by the federal government, the flood insurance rate maps, there's zones A and A one through thirty. On those maps, basically, the, the dark colored areas on the maps are, are what we're talking about. Those maps, um, also are somewhat old at this point, um, that's an issue that, uh, the federal government is addressing now, and there probably will be new floodplain maps coming out in the next four or five years, but we're working with those maps at this point. So what the, um, proposed bylaw does is, um, really clarifies what uses are permitted, prohibited, and allowed by special permit in the floodplain district. And the permitted uses are agriculture, forestry, recreation, conservation, wildlife management, and buildings that were previously, um, constructed prior to the adoption of the bylaw. The prohibited uses are altering, dumping, filling, removal of riverine materials, dams or impoundments, commercial or industrial uses, parking or storage of vehicles or trailers within two hundred feet of the riverbank, dumping of garbage, and discharge of pollutants. And the uses by special permit are single-family homes, residential accessory uses, and enlargement or alteration of, of an existing structure. So those are really important things that aren't in the current bylaw, and, and just, this bylaw clarifies exactly what is allowed and not allowed, um, in, in that district.
Can I just, I should just say that, make sure everybody knows, that we have had a section of our bylaws, forty-three hundred floodplain district, and it's, it's very succinct and not that clear.
Right.
So all these things have to help clarify it, really.
Yeah, and, and just, again, to sort of clarify that even a bit more, the, the text of the bylaw that is here shows the existing language in the light-colored font, and the proposed changes in a darker italicized font, so that you can, you know, clearly identify what the changes are.
So, Chris, you, you're basically saying that everything that's in the light, uh, print will go away?
No, no, it stays.
It's just gonna be at the dark, it's just gonna be added, okay.
This is being added to, that's correct.
Alright.
So the revised, um, bylaw also clarifies what the special permit process would be, um, within the floodplain district, and what findings the planning board would need to make to issue a special permit. And, um, essentially, that, um, kind of boils down to a proposed use shouldn't, um, result in any increase in flood levels. It should meet the state, um, Building Code standards for, for floodproofing and elevation of the first floor above the base flood elevation, and septic systems, um, should be located as far as possible from the, the riverbank. Those are the floodplain, or rather, the special permit provisions. So that's, you know, the, the basic, um, structure of, of the proposed changes. I guess I'll stop there.
So the planning board has, actually, we talked about this at our, our last meeting, and so we're happy to get input from other folks in the public. Did you, you had a meeting about this last week?
No.
That was about something else?
Green development.
Alright, alright, so that didn't, that doesn't play at all into this, okay. So I'm looking at some of the comments we did have last month, you, you, did you put into this new, this, uh, June fourth?
Yes, um, just to give you a couple of examples, um, there were some concerns raised about, um, regulations that might, um, restrict agricultural uses, um, and for the, the, uh, final version of the bylaw, we added, for example, in the four-three, section four-three oh eight prohibited uses, A, it notes that agricultural uses may restore flooded fields to pre-storm conditions. Under the permitted use in four-three oh seven, um, A, it also has a section on agricultural uses, and it clarifies that, um, irrigation and maintenance of farmlands are permitted. So those were some of the things that got brought up previously and were addressed in this final version.
So the one about pre-storm, that's if storm wipes out some of the soil, they can bring it back?
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. And riverbanks, we had talked about riverbanks, did you, um...
It was the irrigation.
That's maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in, in four-three oh eight A also. So do we wanna take public comment?
Absolutely. Yes, we'd love it when the public comments, Deborah. So apparently, the, mics, you gotta be kinda close to it, but you also gotta kinda speak up so people behind you can hear you.
I seldom had difficulty with people having trouble hearing me, I'm afraid. Thank you, Debbie Shriver, I live in Pecum Tuck Drive. I, I've read over this and have, just have a few questions, things that, for some clarification mainly, but, um... Uh, so, one is on forty-three oh three, the establishment of the districts, uh, is being, is based on the flood insurance rate map and so on, and the flood boundary and floodway maps that are dated July second nineteen eighty, and I understand that these may be updated. Is it possible to insert language that just says, or most recent version of such maps? Just so that it's, so that when these are updated, uh, you don't necessarily have to go back to town meeting to change the, um, the basis?
Yeah.
Just, just a question and...
Yeah, I, I would think that would be a reasonable...
For simplification.
So I could just go, probably go in, into that section right there somehow?
That's what I, I would think, one might be able to insert that in there.
So, insert language that says that refers to the most recent...
The most recent version of...
Version of what? Of the...
Floodway maps, that flood boundary...
No, the insurance...
The flood insurance rate map and flood boundaries dash floodway maps.
Insurance, yeah, 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 yeah.
Just, uh, I, I didn't work out the proper syntax, but I think...
Rate map and...
Why would we be bound to a map that we don't know the shape of, or is just sort of gonna be generated by a federal agency or an entity that has nothing or no consideration on what's going on at Deerfield? You're just opening the door to, you know, let someone else determine what goes on here in town. Well, at least if we have these maps, we can see what it means and where it goes. You know, if someone else makes a map, and we're automatically gonna get, accept whatever map is created, then it kinda puts us, it takes away our, our control and influence over the process.
It's the same map, it's just a newer iteration.
Well, right, but it, it might be redrawn.
The boundary could change, so it could affect different landowners and stuff, so...
It would impact more and more people, I'm...
Yeah.
It is a good point, actually, um, and I, and I should, should've pointed this out, you, you actually, um, would have to adopt the new maps as a, you'd have to go through a town, a town meeting vote, right?
Entity, fine.
So you can't make a reference to a, a future, a future map, right?
Make a reference to the most recent version, okay, got it, got it. I have another question... have another question for clarification. I'm looking at item 4305. Um, it, it notes in the floodway designated on the flood boundary, flood wall map, all encroachments, including fill, new construction, et cetera, um, and are prohibited. When you go over to 4309, just help me here, 4309A, no structure or building in the floodplain district shall be erected, constructed substantially improved, and so on. No earth materials dumped, and so on, unless a special permit is granted by the planning board. Is that a problem? Does one contradict the other?
Uh, no.
I've noticed 4305 is the older...
4305 is referring to the regulatory floodway, which is different than the floodplain.
Okay.
The regulatory floodway is basically the river channel and that part that's actively moving water.
Right.
The floodplain is what 4309 is referring to, and really all the rest of the, of the bylaw. The, the only reference to the floodway is in that 4305.
Okay.
You basically cannot do anything at all in the floodway, and, you know, sort of a common sense thing that you wouldn't...
All right.
You wouldn't want to be doing that.
But flood, so floodplain is actually, has a different, um...
Right.
I see it has a different definition up here, too.
Yes.
Good, thank you for that. May I ask also about 4306, uh, floodplain regulations? It, it notes that the development, whether permitted as right or by special permit, must be in compliance with the Mass River Protection Act and Wetlands Protection Act. Just wanted to, uh, ask, is there a way to be clear about which one would hold sway, uh, if, if one or the other is more or less restrictive?
I don't think that's the place of, of a local zoning bylaw. I think that really is something that, um, really generally you don't refer, you don't even reference, um, state regulations in local bylaws because those are a separate piece of legislation.
They're a separate entity, okay.
They are referenced here just because of the importance that compliance with all of these things means.
So which would...
But I don't think trying to do an interpretation of state law in a zoning bylaw would be appropriate.
So the, would, which would hold flat, uh, hold sway?
Well, there's, you know, that's, that's an impossible question to answer because you'd, you'd have to have a specific...
An instant fact, yeah, situation, okay.
But here they have to be in compliance with both of these acts, you're saying?
Yes. But they're, you know, they're independent pieces of legislation, so depending on...
One's all more important than the other.
Right.
I mean, it might be, but...
But does, does one have a superseding authority, I guess is another way, question?
Well, the River Protection Act is really a subset of the Wetlands Protection Act.
Yeah. But does either of those have a...
I think they do separate, independent things. The River Protection Act really protects the river corridor from, from development. The Wetlands Protection Act is really dealing with, with wetlands. Um, so they're, they're really, they, they don't...
My, my question wasn't about those two acts. My question was those two acts in relationship to the floodplain, um, to the floodplain bylaw. Does, do, does the...
Easier with the numbers.
Would one have supersede the other? Would the, the state laws for, uh, river protection and wetlands protection supersede floodplain?
Would they supersede local floodplain?
Correct.
Um, generally, yeah, state regulation would take precedence over a local regulation.
Okay.
Can't think of an example of how that would actually happen in something, a case like this.
That's what I'm wondering. Is there a...
Yeah.
I think my question is really revolving around whether, uh, there's, there becomes an inherent conflict as to which, which...
I don't think so.
Which law has the, the, uh, preeminence in a, in a situation?
Yeah. So again, I think the state law would have that.
One other question on 4309, item B3. And in relation to the non-conforming uses, 4311B, is, is there a contradiction there? Under 4309B3, the enlargement or alteration of an existing structure, provided that no addition is more than 25% larger than the footprint of the structure that existed at the time of adoption. And then on, um, 4311B, under non-conforming uses, any existing use or structure may continue and may be maintained, repaired, and improved, but in no event made larger. So, uh...
I'm sorry, where's, where's the second reference?
The second reference is in 4311B, under non-conforming uses. It's, it's, it sounds to me like people with a non-conforming use cannot make their structure larger.
That's correct. So an example of that might be, um, if there was a commercial use, an existing commercial use located in the floodplain, they would not be allowed to increase that, um...
But under the special permit section, it says they could up to 25% by special permit. So is...
Right.
So I guess my question is just whether, um, it seems like people with a non-conforming use are at a disadvantage, are disadvantaged.
And they, and they should be, right?
Well, I guess that's my question. Is that, was that intended for some, some reason, or is it just, I, I didn't understand how it tallied with the uses by special permit, that's all, under...
Yeah, it looks like that probably could use some clarification. So... Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, fine. I just was wanting to ask, raise the last question. The final thing I had.
Well, just, just, so what are you suggesting, you think they contradict each other, or... One is for conforming uses, the other's non-conforming, and so, like, are there examples of potential non-conforming uses that wouldn't be allowed to be expanded?
Right.
Where a conforming use could be allowed to expand up to 25%?
I think that's what's needed here, as a clarification of...
Well, I think that's what it's, I mean, it's under the heading, 4311 is, is non-conforming uses. We define non-conforming use. So, so I think you were just starting to say, if it's in a residential agricultural zone, but there happens to be a business there, so it's really not conforming to the current bylaws, that would not be allowed to be expanded, whereas if it was a house, it could be expanded.
That would be a good example of, of how that would play out.
So I think, I think there is a difference there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I find it a little unclear to, I, you know...
You have to know what, and, and, not that we're the experts, but there are...
Well, you have to understand what the non-conforming use is.
What does non-conforming mean, yeah?
What, yeah, what does that mean and what does that imply for the floodplain?
I mean, we get cases where people don't have the right frontage or something, so they're non-conforming, but they had it, you know, fifty years ago, and, and, you know, kinda thing.
Does that help?
That helps, but I guess I, my guess I'm, if I were, if I were coming before the board with a proposal, and I was trying to understand how it worked with respect to the bylaw, I'd have a hard ti, I, you know, it'd be challenging to understand.
What would make it more clear, do you think?
Yeah.
But if it was conforming at one time, and then we changed the zoning, so it's not conforming now, why should they get penalized because they conformed originally?
But they're not, are they?
Well, that's the thing. They're not getting penalized necessarily, but they're also not allowed to do something that, that a more conforming could do.
But the problem is, it's, it's, it's also kind of to protect them, because they're in a floodplain where they are more, they're more at risk. So you're kind of setting things up so people don't do something. That puts them, their property more at risk. So it is, it is a complex, you know, it's...
So like the last one, it says a non-conforming structure which is destroyed may be rebuilt on the same location, but not larger than its original. So it's, it's not penalizing, it's actually, it's kinda like grandfathering it in.
Right.
But it's not letting it go beyond that.
Which is what non-conforming uses are, is grandfathered-in uses.
Right, basically. So it's not penalizing them, it's just not giving them sort of extra, become non, more non-conforming.
I'm still finding it a little confusing. If it were a house that were there, that was...
It was conforming, it was...
If it was a house in a residential district...
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't be a non-conforming use.
I see, then it was, it would be a conforming use within that floodplain, got it.
If it were a commercial use in a residential district, it's a non-conforming use.
It's a non-conforming, okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you, John.
But I think at one time you could put a commercial building anywhere. There was no zoning resp, you know...
Right, so we're not telling them they have to take it down. They just can't expand it, it's all the same.
I know, but, and maybe your mind, it doesn't, you don't seem like you're penalizing that property, but in my mind, you are. And that's all I'm just saying.
Yep.
So do you wanna amend that, Ben?
I'm just asking why, you know, why should, why should they be penalized if they've met the criteria and then zoning changed and, or was created?
Well, they're not being penalized in any way. They can, can continue to be in that spot and continue the use for as long as...
But they couldn't make it any larger.
Right.
So, in my mind, that's penalizing.
Right now, they could.
And right now, they could.
Well, is that, is that true, under your existing bylaws? How do you treat non-conforming uses now, in, in, let's say, a residential district?
ZBA.
Yeah, it would not be, it would go to ZBA, exactly.
So it's, it's not a by right thing to be able to expand a non-conforming use in your bylaws, is what I think you're saying.
I don't know if we've ever crossed that.
I don't think we have, but I... I would imagine if somebody came to us with a non-conforming use, grandfathered in...
Yeah, they'd make it more non-conforming if they didn't meet the requirements of, uh, square footage and... I'm just trying to think if we dealt with anything like that.
We did right down the road, but it wasn't in a floodplain. It was a non-conforming house on a non-conforming lot, and they wanted to, you know, go beyond the, um, the scope of the bylaws, and, and we allowed that.
But I think Max is right. We wouldn't, we, we wouldn't make that decision. That would be a ZBA decision, because that's outside of the, outside of the bylaw. So, in that sense, they're already kind of penalized because, and that's why these bylaws are cha, they're changed not by us here, but by the town, because that has to be kind of more significant voting, not just the seven of us.
And they also have a more significant advantage, too, because they're allowed to be a business, excuse me, they're allowed to be a business in a residential zone. So that gives them some sort of advantage also. Like, so when you're talking about them being penalized by not being able to expand, well, they already have a business advantage because they don't have any immediate competitors. So...
Would it help to just add a definition, uh, for non-conforming and, or some way of clarifying those differences?
That's, that's something that's already in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I'd have to go and look at that definition.
All right.
That's a standard term. It's, that's in the zoning act as well.
Right, 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 all right. Um, in terms of penalties for any, for violations, I guess one question is whether section 5130 would need to be amended so that, uh, penalties by the planning board as a permit...
See, see the number again?
5130, which under enforcement, administrative enforcement. So that, I, I think it references penalties by the ZBA. And I'm wondering if, in light of the, the fact that the, as I understand it, the planning board would be the permit granting authority for the, for the floodplain, under the floodplain district, are, are they actually covered? It's, it, ZBA is referenced explicitly, planning board is not, but the, should that section be amended to include the planning board?
Here in the administrative section?
I believe so.
So you, so you said in the ad, you could add a, or any decision rendered by the Board of Appeals and/or the Planning Board...
Yeah.
Shall be $300. But it's really any violation of this bylaw?
The zoning bylaw. I guess another question is, presumably that would apply to the floodplain district bylaw, right?
Yeah, anything, anything in the...
Right. But it just makes explicit the planning board also as a permit granting, special permit granting body.
The way I read it, it would ar, already cover floodplain zoning.
How so? It would, it would, as the planning board?
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with what John's saying. It, it's pretty clear, the penalty for violation of any provision of this bylaw.
Okay.
I don't think you have to change that.
All right.
I guess why they added this comma, or any decision rendered by the Board of Appeals, is those might be decisions, but those decisions would be based on the bylaws, too. So I'm not sure why they have that exception.
Right, okay. Just so that it isn't excluding the planning board, is the key thing. Good, good. That was all of my questions. Thank you for taking the time to answer.
Thank you for pointing that out, though. We don't, we don't look at that penalty section very often. Do you think that's been applied, ever? Anybody else? Come on up. Thanks, Deb.
I'm Judy Kundal from Lee Road. I just have a couple of comments. One is section 5307, permitted uses. I think...
Can you say the numbers again, sorry?
4307?
Sorry, yes. Yes, 43, 4307. Um, and the introductory clause says, provided that they do not require structures, fill or storage. And then A says that agriculture, cultural uses are, are permitted, including barns or farm-related structures. To me, that seems to be in conflict.
I think it's just making a clear exception.
Yeah.
This was relative to what we discussed previously.
This came up at your prior meeting. They were concerned about the barns. But I wonder, wouldn't the, the, you would not allow new barns, but allow existing barns under the non-conforming use section?
No, it wouldn't be a non-conforming use. It's a permitted use.
Barns.
All right, so it's just a clarification of the introductory clause.
Okay, correct.
And then my other one is 4308D. And that's, I'm not clear, the special permit authority can grant a variance for parking or storage of vehicles. I'm not quite sure why that language is in there, since there is a variance provision in the state law generally, 40A, section 10. And the criteria are a little bit different for the hardship, not, it includes more than lot size or configuration. I think it sets up a confusing situation if you have a... So the special permit granting authority under zoning is the ZBA, and they act under 40A, section 10.
Well, there's, uh, two things. One thing is that we have to discuss, who is the special permit granting authority? And that might have to be explicit in here, if it is the planning board... And that might have to be explicit in here, if it is the planning board and not the ZBA.
Yeah, because under the, under the zoning bylaw, it's the ZBA.
Unless specified else, otherwise, it's, it's a ZBA. But here, we're considering making it the planning board, or proposing.
Right. Yeah, it does say the planning board is the special permit granting authority here.
Under this section, under 4, 4308.
Well, the special permit granting authority under this whole bylaw is the planning board, where you, where you look at.
Or does it, does it say that?
4309, uses by special permit. It says unless a special permit is granted by the planning board, in the first sentence.
I just think it's, it's not clear when you have special permit granting authority in 4308. And then, then you don't define special permit granting authority until 4309. But then I also think the variance language that you're throwing in is different from the variance language in the statute, is all. I'm, I'm, unless you wanted to limit it to only lot size or configuration. I might make it clear that they could grant a variance in accordance with the criteria of 40A, Section 10.
Oh, both, the whole thing, it's all two, gotcha.
Which is soil conditions, shape, topography, land or structures.
Yeah, I think, I would say that's exactly correct, that this is, the intent of this is to restrict the, the decision further than a general variance.
I'm, I don't know whether I'd use the word variance then, I think that confuses it. The special permit granting authority may permit.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't, we never done variances, right?
No.
No.
So, yeah, maybe just.
And here it just says they consider whether or not, send them over to the ZBA.
Yeah, but I mean, the idea is to not have people go back and forth.
Right.
Right.
Variance waiver.
Right.
But it's still a, it's still a ZBA issue, isn't it?
No, well, what, what we're saying is, should everything in this be under the planning board?
I think I would add, then, under the definitions for this floodplain district bylaw, the special permit granting authority is the planning board.
Yeah, and in our marijuana section and the solar section, we did that. So we can just check on the language.
Yeah, I think that makes it clearer.
And I think we do say it kind of upfront.
And then I guess I wouldn't use the word variance, because that's implies something special.
Okay.
Different provisions. And that was all I had.
So it changed that language from provision, different provisions, or so that not variance?
Right, say, I mean, say, permit them or allow this, allow storage under certain circumstances, the special permit takes some time to think about.
So Chris, and we can draft this, but in Section 3800, which is solar, we actually have a thing that says special permit granting, it defines special permit and then it defines special permit granting authority for the purposes of this section, the planning board is a special permit granting authority.
Right.
Because if it's, if it's not stated clearly, then it goes, it defaults to the ZBA.
Yeah, I, I think that's good language to probably add in here. 3800, just an initial section?
D. Oh, yeah, the initial section.
Yeah, this is under 3812 definitions, actually.
Right.
Oh, it's, it's in definitions, and we're going to have a new definition section here. Oh, then we talked about, should these definitions go into our general definition, or they go inside of the?
Well, can't there be a duplicate? It seems to me that's the smartest thing in the world, is to have them at the beginning, the ones that are, it's like a teacher thing.
Have them both places?
You have your glossary for the pertinent ones, but then you have another one that's everything, so that if you run into it someplace else in the document. I mean, I don't know if that takes the act of Congress in town too, but I think in terms of being able to read these and make them readable, sorry, that having them in the appropriate place as well as a nice big chunky glossary would keep us both, keep, make it easier, more easier to read and keep us honest in terms of how we're using the language.
It's really useful to, to reconfigure your entire bylaw, to have all the definitions at the beginning.
At the beginning, yeah.
So, that'd be another, another project, as we've kind of mentioned that, it'd probably be worth doing now.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll put that on my list, where's my little list?
Yeah, so, those are, those are helpful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Annalee Wolfco for Mountain Road. Section four, just questions, two of them. Section 4310B13A, which is kind of on page three, towards the bottom. B13A. It talks about all buildings and structures within the zone shall be elevated so the lowest floor is located at or above the base flood, flood elevation. I'm wondering what the reference point is for having it at the base flood elevation. Certainly, all we see with the media these days with rising water so quickly, that is the base flood elevation really too conservative here? Do we need to have?
Can you tell us again what section you're referring to?
Sorry, it's Section 4310. Lowercase b, lowercase i, or 13A.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, on page three. So I'm just wondering why it's chosen that our new regulation should say, you know, at the base flood elevation, when in fact, it seems like that might, in five years, be underwater.
So that, so that language comes directly out of the State Building Code, which in turn comes from the National Flood Insurance Program. So it's sort of consistency across all those regulations. So I think it's important to, to be consistent in this case.
Even if it might mean that in five years, we're underwater in those areas.
Well, this, they locate at or above, so I would hope people will care, will put it above.
I mean, I don't know that we need New Orleans stilts, but maybe we do, I don't know. Okay. And I think what you were saying earlier, though, too, is that local would defer to federal anyway.
And state, yeah.
And then my understanding is that these are just sort of the general overview, and then these are the specific regs, is that, that's correct?
Yes, that's intended just to kind of help in understanding the basics of.
So, okay, on the last page, and I wasn't, I just wasn't able to pull out exactly where this is referring to, but it talks about of the overview, septic systems must be located as far as possible from the riverbank. I'm not quite sure where that is on the regs, but that feels very subjective. I don't know if there's a way we can.
It's the feasibility clause. I was right? As feasible, as far as feasible.
Well, yeah, I mean, anything for a price, but, yeah, right, it feels.
Which one is this?
Um, it's, well, it's on the overview, but it's the last sentence of the overview, and it says, septic systems must be located as far as possible from the riverbank. I mean, my, my budget might dictate that it has to be pretty close.
The language in the bylaw is pretty similar. It's, it's in Section 4310A6. And it says onsite wastewater disposal systems shall be located as far from rivers or water bodies as is feasible.
I mean, doesn't Title V address the location of that? So, you know, that's pretty subjective, because we could say, well, your house is 200 feet from the river, and Title V allows a septic system to go there, but we'd prefer it to be 400 feet. Do we have the right to make someone pump their septic, you know, 200 extra feet to keep it away from the river, because we feel it's better?
Yeah, I'm trying to think about how you could make that more specific. I think the intent was to allow the planning board some flexibility there.
I mean, you can put a septic system within 100 feet of a well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
Isn't that still true?
I think that the, the flexibility, you still have to offer landowners flexibility in terms of how they're plotting out their land. So what you're doing is you're pointing out an issue that's going to be significant at some point. It's going, person for whom it's going to be the most significant is the landowner. And as Max points out, I mean, that's, that's probably the biggest implication, frankly, in a flood. There's going to be all kinds of water whooshing around, so it's not like, we can't predict, we just do the best we can at that point.
Is that, though, where, then the planning board, if, if some plans are being presented and the planning board thinks, well, you can, it's more, it is feasible for you to pump it farther away, and the, the person who's proposing it says it's not feasible, then it's just whether you take a vote and decide whether it's feasible or not? Is that how it would come down?
I, I don't really know. I, I think that the board would have a difficult time proving that it is beneficial to move it further away than what the state regulations require. Because as Max said, you know, you currently can have a, a leaching facility within 100 feet of a well. So if they say my septic system's going to be 200 feet away from my well, but now you want me to move it further away because I'm nearer a river, or, you know, so I, I don't know, I think we'd.
Well, do the state regulations say feasible, or do they have it more specific?
No, it's more specific. It's in actual feet, yeah.
Feet, like from a river?
Yes.
Oh, so could we have the feet from the river too?
I think the intention here was, if you have, you know, a lot where you can put the septic system anywhere on the lot, that you would choose the location that is the furthest from the river on that lot that's reasonable. That's the kind of language we were trying to work with here.
I mean, I.
Rather than putting it closer to the river.
I think a lot would.
All other things being equal, basically.
I think a lot would have to do with the soil conditions. I mean, you know, in certain areas of town, you know, you might have 40 acres of clay. But in other areas, you have 40 acres of sand. But there are also areas in town where you can have sand, then clay, then a little more sand, and depending on how and where it is.
And clearly, Title V supersedes this, again, this provision. So that would be the first thing that have to be satisfied.
Sure.
And in terms of whether or not you can afford it, that's a, that's a reason, right? Like, that's an actual, as possible. If it's not possible for you to pay more to put it someplace else, then that's not possible, like.
Well.
No one's going to demand that someone pays $10.
I don't want to go into my 401K, but I want to put my addition on or something like that, I mean.
I mean, I think some local Board of Health regulations, in conjunction with Title V, give a municipality the ability to dictate where the location of a septic system is. If I, if I remember right, the language is specific identifiable areas. So there was a time in Deerfield where, you know, the Board of Health thought, well, we don't want to see raised septic system, so you couldn't build a raised septic system for a long time. But then it was challenged, and, and the state regulations said, if you have a, a specific identifiable area that is a problem, then yes, you can up the ante on, you know, the construction and location, but otherwise, you just can't blanket say, you, you can't do something like that in the town. So, you know, I guess if a situation came before us and through engineering, we, we saw that there was a problem here, even though it was in an allowable area, we might have some leeway to say, okay, yeah, you could do it here, but it would be better off over here, because, you know, that's where you get into, you know, protecting the well-being of the applicant as well.
I think that's a good example
Yeah.
of how this might play out.
Yeah.
So if I'm understanding, then by having it less well-defined, you're hoping for a better outcome through sort of a negotiation process?
Well, and then each site is going to have different, once you define it, then the, the specs for, that you, that you clarify are going to be, we're going to end up interpreting it for each individual site, given the Title Line, uh, Title V concerns, our soil concerns, or, and likely, actually, cost isn't even going to be, I, I wouldn't even, I don't even know that we would ever get into that, that, that's not.
My point is, we would never insist that someone pay $15,000 more, you know, to satisfy this, like, if there's another reasonable way.
Another reasonable site.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, that we're not going to insist that people spend money they don't have.
To do something heroic, so overly heroic, and that would be, so that gives us that discretion, because each site's different.
Very subjective.
Very, yeah, it ends up being subjective, given the site.
Okay.
Right, am I, yeah.
So, what you were saying earlier almost too, that in general, when we're allowing these sort of as possible, as feasible, that we're hoping that this then can give the planning board more leverage rather than giving the planning board less authority, because
Because, actually, you're right, you have, you have a good point there too, right. So sometimes it could be that the planning board would have more authority, just because it's there, I would say. No, you can, you can still move it over here, if this is feasible, and so you could do this. So that's, to your point, that's.
Who knows?
Yeah, well, that's it. It's, you can't go for each different site, but because each different site has different concerns, it would be hard to legislate for all of that one.
So where does that leave us? Do we want to change that wording, or?
I think it's okay the way it is, but it's up to you.
I mean, a lot of the special permit is, is. A lot of the special permit issues are subjective and you work it out. And the main thing is, it's not, the benefits outweigh the detriments to the town. That's the definition, summary definition of special permit. So really, it's, a lot of it is, is if it's going to affect neighbors or going to affect the town.
Oh, that's, that's helpful, that it's
we would be tougher on it if it's not going to affect, you know.
Benefits outweigh the, the detriments to the town rather than to the person who is.
Actually, to the neighborhood and the town, I think it says. So it's not the person itself.
Okay.
They have, they want to hurt themselves, and it doesn't hurt anybody else. It's like, we don't want to get involved. Or as involved.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, you're getting feedback. We're getting feedback. Yeah, that's helpful. So I guess, just, we, we touched on it, but just to be clear, with the planning board, is the planning board members that are here positive about us being the special permitting authority?
Well, I, I think that the planning board or somebody should always be the special permitting, granting authority, for the biggest reason is that if someone, an applicant, doesn't like our decision, they can go to the zoning board of appeals, is what it's supposed to be for. The way Deerfield has most of their things going to the ZBA, then you have to go to court after that.
I completely agree with that as well. I think you should be the, the special permit granting authority for everything.
Many, a lot of towns have that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and at the planning commission, we always recommended that the towns go that way.
I know, I, Roger and Max might notice, but there's been plenty of battles years ago about changing that, but ZBA was so entrenched in this town that they wanted that control, and that's why it stayed like that. But I, I always felt that if, it caused a, a unique problem, because, you know, people, if they were denied something, they, they always just had to go to court. There was nobody else to, you know, bring their case to.
Yeah, it's a lot more expensive for the applicant in that case.
And I, I thought it makes more sense in many cases, because we're, we're often doing a site plan review. You know, A and Rs are involved, they're sitting in front of us anyway.
Right.
And then, then sometimes they have to go to this other one to get this other thing. It'd be easier if we just did it at the same time.
Right.
That's happened a lot of times.
And how many times have applicants, I mean, I see their frustration, because we don't want to do something because ZBA, and the ZBA doesn't want to do something because. because, you know, and it's like, yeah.
And now that we're the entrenched board in town, we can take.
They're going to write about us later, and that'll be our, our legacy.
All right, so that's, so, but anyway, for now, we have to specifically say it in this bylaw until we change the larger bylaw. Anything else? Anything from planning board members? So this is a public hearing, and then, so I think this, the comments we heard are not large enough that we need to have another public hearing. At this point, I think we could just make these quick things and bring it to town meeting.
Right. I think the general rule of thumb is if there's a change in the bylaw that is making it more restrictive, then you have to go back and do another hearing, but I don't believe that the couple of changes that have been talked about here are, I would put them in the category of clarifications, and I don't think they make it more restrictive, so I don't believe you have to.
The only thing that I need to add is that being members of a town.
Being members of a town that have got a couple of big floodplain construction projects coming up, I wonder why it is that we're talking about more restrictions on.
You were talking about this, too?
Excuse me?
The, the treatment plants?
Yes.
That's, oh, okay, I've had this conversation.
Why, why, what's with this timing?
You have to have sewage treatment plants near the river, that's the whole point. So I, I mean, that.
What did you say?
The sewage, don't the sewage treatment plants, I mean, isn't it better to have them near the river?
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily better, but just because of what they do, it's always in the lowest area, because everything's gravity-fed.
Gravity-fed, okay, all right. I had that question recently, and, thank you.
That's, yeah.
I'm just curious, why are we talking about this now?
The origins of this are, the town received a grant from the state to do a municipal vulnerability plan, which.
Who applied for the grant?
The Board of Selectment.
Okay, and are you being paid from that grant?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
So that was one of the recommendations of the plan, which the town adopted through its Board of Selectment, that, that floodplain zoning needed to be updated and improved.
As, I'll just repeat, as members of a town that are going to be doing some major construction projects in the floodplain, is this the time to become more restrictive on?
Yes.
And we're just going to cost ourselves more money?
I don't think this bylaw would, would have that effect.
Would impact it, because it's already there, it's existing. You think it's going to?
But it's in, it's a non-conforming use in.
It's an industrial complex.
You're talking about the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Both of them.
Okay.
It's an industrial use, commercial use. It's a municipal use.
Municipal use, yes.
But it's, 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 I'm, I'm just, I'm puzzled by the timing, that's all.
Yeah, there's no, no connection at all.
I don't think there's a connection, but I, I kind of, I, I can see your point, Max, because I know that there were a lot of things that we tried to get done in town before, and just because it was a municipality, we didn't get a free pass. Matter of fact, it went the other way, so I can.
Tried to hold ourselves to a higher standard and cost ourselves more money.
Right, so, I mean, there are, there is some things in here that could really damper the, the construction at the sewer treatment plants.
I mean, if, if the Corps of Engineers isn't enough restriction, with any, that, to me, the work that I've done in near rivers, in rivers, the Corps of Engineers has always been the determining entity.
One way to address that question would be to add into 4307 permitted uses, we could add a clarification that municipal uses, including wastewater treatment plants, are permitted use.
I think that makes a ton of sense, because then you're, you're covering, and Max, I think you make a really strong point, that, that. We don't want to impact that project. That, that project benefits the town. We're looking for something that benefits the town, and if, if it ends up being, I don't know, I just, I don't think that, I think that, I, I think this is more in response to rise, rising, you know, more flooding and Irene, and farmers getting, you know, significantly impacted, and trying to guide, guide the growth around the, the changed river pattern. I mean, we did, I was at that municipal, the, you know, any kind of dramatic flood, flood event, well, all of this is out the window anyway, but there are a lot of other less significant, but also highly impactful flood events that we have had, and we will persist in having. So this way, we're not responding, always being responsible, being proactive. I'm imagining that's why we got the grant, and that's why the grant was available.
That's right. Yeah, so you're thinking of the wastewater treatment plant as an industrial use, but it's, it's not in that category.
Well, it's the construction that's going on there, yeah, okay.
But I think, I think we can address that with that clarification in the permitted uses section. Is there another municipal use that you're thinking about that would also be impacted?
Bridge construction?
Well, bridges aren't regulated under zoning.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking about all the things that we're just driving the cost up on.
Right.
By enacting more rules and regulations.
Yeah.
And are we being, like, with the stormwater, the state sort of drove that bus, and we were just kind of trying to keep in conformance with state regulations. Is there something that's driving this, other than the availability of funds, for writing more regulations?
Really protecting the town, people in town, the, the structures and, and, you know, generally, that, like, it says in the, in the purposes of the bylaws at the outset.
It's all well-intended, but I'm just looking at what the, the outcome is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for protecting people and property, but right now, as the town sits, it is the way it is. And we have had a couple of, you know, severe floodings, and I'm going to use Deerfield, severe floodings when the water gets deep enough where Main Street and Old Deerfield goes underwater. I, I, you know, there's areas along that section of town where people own land probably could build a house, but I think that they're smart enough not to, and that's probably why there's been no development down there. I know, you could build houses taller, the cost of flood insurance and everything, I think a lot, there's a lot of things that prohibit people from doing that type of thing, but.
Well, there, there has been, you know, elsewhere in the country, obviously, a lot of building in floodplains that was really ill-advised, and has cost, you know, the town and the, and really, all of us as taxpayers, a lot of money.
Well, it's true, and, and I agree with that, but I mean, how do you, I mean, Deerfield's a community of 5,000 people, and then you take a place like New Orleans, that I don't know how many, there's in excess of a million people, and we know it's six feet under the ocean, and they continue to get, to build and develop there, you know, it's like, what are they thinking? Yeah, that's true.
So you're saying, so in prohibited uses, we have commercial or industrial uses that are prohibited, so we wouldn't want that to include municipal projects, so either.
Well, I mean, if, if, if we privatize the sewer treatment plant like Sunderland has, and that becomes property of a operator.
Then it's a commercial.
Like Holyoke and Chick, or, I believe Holyoke's turned theirs over to a private company.
Yeah.
So we could say.
That's the operation of the.
So we could say municipal.
Against the ownership.
So you could say municipal services versus, you know, so no matter who controls it.
I'm, I'm just posing, posing the question, because it just seems like an odd timing for events and reviews of the floodplain.
Well, that's, that's what we're here for, is to get your input, so.
Okay, I just.
And I don't think it's, I just think it's also a convergence, it's a, it's like, really, it's an uncomfortable timing, I totally agree, but it's a convergence. One, there's deferred maintenance, that's lingered on, and the other is weather, weather patterns, it's, I think it's an unfortunate convergence.
So, so what I was suggesting is that we add a letter G to 4307, which would say municipal uses, including wastewater treatment plants?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
I haven't seen your map of, well, all of that's in Whitley, but, I mean, it, it looks like every brook has a floodplain as well?
Oh, you're talking about these maps?
On the maps, yes. There's a, there's a floodplain for every river and brook.
Most of the brooks have a fairly narrow floodplain, you know, you can check that out. Those are, those are the federal flood insurance maps.
Right, but I saw them.
Yeah.
Okay.
At, at the same time, and I don't, I don't think, even municipal projects have, need some guidelines, and I, I do remember, not too distant past, municipal project that I, I feel like was built before any of us knew it went up, and didn't go through any site plan review.
Well, the ambulance building.
Well, the ambulance and the DPW, they're, I don't think.
That was the expedited permitting district.
Right.
So we didn't have authority. We had nothing to say.
Expedited before the neighbors even knew what was going on. So anyway, so it's a permitted use, but it still has to go through, it still has to be looked at, and.
Well, you raise a good point. Does it belong, do municipal uses belong in the uses by special permit section?
Just, just to get a little bit of.
No, they're exempt.
Well, actually, in our general bylaws, municipal projects are exempt anyway, you're right.
Aren't all municipal uses exempt from even state zoning?
Well.
I mean, you can, you can build a, you can build a police station or a fire station pretty much anywhere.
It's, it's true, so, I mean, that would be the, the overall answer to his question. I was just trying to satisfy the concern by making it really explicit, I guess, but you're right, that, that is true.
I think schools, schools, churches.
Didn't want the, the design consultant to get.
No.
Too deep into the.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what that, the legal answer to that would be. If somebody came along, wanted to build a church in a floodplain, could you stop them?
But that's not municipal.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, though, if, if somebody came along, wanted to build a church in the floodplain, could you stop them? I don't think so.
I think you're right. I think that's an exempted use from zoning.
Sure, educational is exempted.
Except, I think, I think the language, though, is except in cases where there's a threat to safety and welfare, so you might actually be able to make that argument about a church, because.
Right, but I, the chances of, I think that would be argued, if it was in an area where it could be like a flash flood, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then you say agricultural use is exempted in every, every zone also.
Right.
And childcare.
Right.
Not going to put childcare on the riverbank, but.
I agree.
Because most child, small child care.
You know, agricultural uses is another example.
Run out of people's homes.
We're, we're just sort of reiterating.
Yeah.
What the state statute says here.
All right. So our next steps would be to.
So we're not going to add the G, G?
No, because it's already exempted.
Okay.
So I would make the suggested changes and, and get you back a text with those highlighted, so you can look at them one more time, and, and then I think it's.
And normally, then, we vote to recommend to the town meeting.
Right.
Bylaws.
Right.
All right. I'm just wondering if there's any, we don't really have a procedure for, or do we get comment from the zoning board?
Or select board, no? We send it out?
Or select, and/or select board? Probably be a nice thing to do, especially, you don't want them at town meeting, to some zoning board people to say, oh, we don't want the, to be the planning board that has the authority or something.
And the conservation commission, I mean, I would think you'd want to pass it around.
Yeah.
Because Congress would also want to see if it's not, not necessarily impactful to them, like, maybe.
Anything that has to do with wetlands is.
Building commissioner.
So if it's a permitted use in the floodplain, and there's a section where if you add 25% more, larger footprint, it has to bring, be brought up to present code. So now, I think the code says we have to be at or above the flood, height of the flood, so you would have to raise that whole structure, if you wanted to go 25% or more.
You would have to raise the addition.
I don't think it reads that way, though.
That brings up another question, Chris, is on floodplain maps, they just show an area, they don't show elevation, do they?
Yeah, they do.
I mean, a flood liver, level?
Yeah, they do.
Elevation?
Yeah.
Because I know, I mean, Deerfield's small, but the actual elevation of floodwater along the Deerfield River is going to be much higher than along the Connecticut River, just because of the, you know, the elevation of the both pieces of land.
And the 100-year flood elevations are going to be significantly higher in this year than they were in 1984, when those maps were made, too, so that's the other.
I think what Kip is saying, like, sea level.
Sea level, yeah, well, that's what everything's based on, sea level, so.
Yeah.
Roger, I'd read your thing, the, all buildings or structures erected or substantially improved within the zone shall be elevated. So it's the ones being erected, not already erected.
Right.
You wouldn't have to go back and raise the whole building, it's the new part of it.
That's right.
I think that, that's the way I interpret it.
So if you're adding addition to your home, or business, or whatever is permitted in that thing, and you're, will say your first floor is at 100 feet, you know, the sea level, so now they are saying if the flood is at 102 feet, that means that first floor has to be at 102 feet, so you'd be like two feet higher than the main part of your house.
Right.
So.
Split level.
That's right. And, and frankly, you'd have to do that even if the town doesn't adopt this.
Why, because of flood insurance?
Because of the state building code.
That states in the flood building code that you'd be two feet higher than what the floodplain is.
That's in the state, that's in the state building code, yeah. So we're just sort of referencing that portion of the state building code to make sure that that gets wrapped into it.
How long is that in the state building code?
Quite a while.
Like?
Like 20 years.
Well, I asked you this question before, and I, and I talked with Dick Kalaschewski about it, since Massachusetts doesn't necessarily have a building code anymore, how does that play into it?
We, we have a building code.
Well, we use the ICC, international code, so, and that has absolutely nothing to do with that, and so.
There is absolutely a state building code.
Well, I know that there is, but it's an amendment.
Which is based on, based on the ICC. The ICC influenced the direction of the state building code, but the state building code is in the Massachusetts Code of Regulations, the CMR, and, and it's.
Yeah, but it's all, it's all the international, the ICC code.
It's based on that.
No, if you go in, if you go to the state bookstore and you say you want a Massachusetts building code, you're going to get an ICC building code book.
Well, you can, you can go online, and you can get the state building code, it's, it's all there, online.
The evidence.
If you look at it, it, they, when they developed the state building code, they extensively used the ICC, but there is a state building code, and that's the document that's enforceable in Massachusetts, not, not the ICC specifically.
Think of all of those, you know, Roger, after all the buildings down on the Cape, for instance, you see anybody who's building now? Their building would.
What did you say, Rachel?
Down on the Cape. And I know this is, you know, Bob was 20, whatever, 27, eight years ago, but memories are long, and people are building, they build their, the people who build back right after Bob are all high up on stilts.
Yeah.
Some of them bizarrely, like, some of them to some code that I have no idea.
Well, it could be the code, like Florida, is that why you?
Well, Florida, and so you, when you drive around, and, you know, the low homes, you know, they're the old ones, because everybody else is.
Right.
And you can't put a bathroom, or, you know, you've got a lot of restrictions about what you can do or not.
Well, it can't be living space, I think you can have a bathroom down below, but no living space.
Yeah, so anyway, I mean, I think that, you know, it's, it's beyond, the, the floodplain, what we're doing is coding it in Deerfield, like, you know, for the town, but it's not like, it's, it's increasingly just economically, if you're building, you want to build something that you don't have to rebuild.
Well, that's my, would be my mentality, but some people.
Don't, don't build in the floodplain in the first place.
Right, 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 right.
All right, so we're good with the next step being it comes back to us, and then, so, yeah, it'd be great to be able to pass it around to the different ZBA com-coms, or just before, before it would go to town meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that'd be great.
Okay, I'll follow up.
Anything else public? Thank you very much for the comments. We will follow up with this. So this, this was a public hearing, so, so we don't think there's gonna be anything substantial so that we can close the public hearing?
I believe so.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing for the proposed zoning changes to the floodplain district.
I second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Who seconded? Oh, John did.
Six, nothing to.
Close the public hearing. Thanks very much, Chris, and we.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it, and we got it done before June 30th, which is good.
Yeah.
Some ADA valuations.
Any other business not reasonably anticipated? So I have a business that was anticipated, it's been so anticipated. Notice of decision.
Can I just, before Chris folds those maps up, I'd like to look at them again. Are you gonna take those maps right now, or?
I propose to give them back to the board of assessors who have apparently the only copy in town.
I just wanted to look at them.
So we have two decisions on the marijuana establishments that we have not signed yet. And we haven't.
Which one's that for?
Actually haven't completed them, the 198 Mill Village Road and the 10 Greenfield Road.
I think the.
Adam has helped us substantially put together the one for 198, and it's been looked over by the applicants. And they made a couple of comments, so it's coming down to just a couple of things. Plus, we gotta fill in some of the, kind of, some little background fact, like how many public meetings we had and stuff, public hearings. And then you, we authorized you months ago to be, to sign, to sign this one.
Keep saying you have to sign it.
So you're the only one that actually needs to sign that.
Well.
But we really need.
With that aside, that was one of the things I'd like to talk about tonight. Do you realize that entire document is useless?
Well, see, I do think it's not useless, but I, I imagine what you're gonna say is that it's already passed because of the time.
That's right. And the other thing that we should be aware of, I just want you guys to hear this too, is because, because we didn't meet that deadline, not only they can continue, they can do whatever they want, they don't have to comply with any of the conditions that we had.
So we have an agreement with the 198 Mill Village Road folks that they would rather have the signed.
They would rather.
Document, the signed decision from us, knowing that they could go around it.
Okay.
And I think the other people might say the same thing, although we haven't, have you heard from them lately?
Nope.
And I just think it's still incumbent on us to just do it, and so your point is taken, but it's also makes sense to do this.
But I'm just saying that, you know, we, we have, and I'm not saying not to, I'm just saying that we need to understand by not doing this, they can just, you know, do what they choose, you know? So if they, I don't remember anything specific, but if they're supposed to put in a drainage thing, is one of our conditions, and they find out it's too expensive, they don't have to do it.
I, I agree, but there are certain building code things that we, that they have to do.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
If we ask for something beyond what their standard, yeah, you're right. So I, so I'm not think, I don't think there's a lot of issues with it, but, so. So the question is, who wants to do a little more work on these?
Well, what exactly is it that you said you wanted me to sign?
Well, the last page is what to sign, but the beginning has to be a little bit more, just some names and addresses, and then, like I say, the meetings that we had, you know, this is the kind of thing that Pat Smith always did for us, and the date of all the public hearings, ideally, again, often we had a staff person who helped us with this, but this, we've been in this little hole for a little while. So is that, it takes going back through our minutes, basically.
Who, who made these for you?
That, Adam.
Oh, why didn't you, I can't explain that.
And, and so I can send you the, you know, the word documents.
Oh, okay.
So why don't I send you that and try to, try to pull together the minutes and stuff and try to just fill in some of these blanks? I don't, and as you said, I don't think we have to be so perfect now. And, and like Dick Evans looked over that, and he agrees with it. He took out, he did, actually, when I sent it to you, there'll be a few red things and a few crossed out things, and then we can accept the changes. But Adam and Dick seem to be in agreement on everything, so.
What, well, will you fill in the notice, the date of notice of the decision?
Yeah, I didn't know that, it should be back, because then on the back it does say, by votes of the planning board on March 4th. So we're still using that date as when we voted on it.
Okay.
And we indicate that here, that we voted on it on March 4th, but we have to go and make sure that who was at what meeting so that it carries, you know? So it all works. I mean, I can ask Diana or Priscilla if they have any time to kind of do some of this, but it's been lingering.
Yeah, ask, ask Priscilla if you want, and then if you want, send that to her, I'll just come in and deal with her.
She might be able to just put some of the dates together and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
All right, so I just wanted everybody to know that's going on, and then, all right, I mean, I looked through my notes from that June 12th meeting, and I, I don't remember, but I thought there was something we were supposed to. Well, we're gonna have a subcommittee to meet with Adam, he hasn't got back to us about, this is about a dollar general issue. So we're waiting for him to get back to us. Thanks, Chris, we'll see you.
I thought we were supposed to have a meeting and have no more than three people.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Oh, but before we move on, I will, I will contact Deerfield Naturals, that will be my job, to make sure I, we know where they are so that, in the same vein, they haven't.
The 10 Greenfield Road?
Yeah. They're still, yeah, they don't even have their, yeah, their agreement yet, do they? Do you know?
I think they, yeah, the community also agreement?
Yeah, no. Yeah, okay.
Matter of fact, I saw at a select board meeting that they came back, they say changed from LLC to an incorporation.
Did I read correctly that the select board is going to approve medical marijuana retail sales on Mill Village Road? And does that, I just, I read some minutes from.
Well, I mean, what I was talking about before, that's exactly what could happen, you know? Well, that would be a change of use, and then it would come for a, for a site plan review.
That would have to come to us.
Right, because it was cultivation only with our discussions.
Yeah, but it's cultivation, it's residential, and we passed zoning that, or something.
Yeah, dispensary's not even allowed out there.
Yeah, dispensary wouldn't be allowed, it's commercial application.
We have a overlay district for, for retail.
They use the word establishment, so maybe establishment is the general word for everything? So maybe that's what you saw.
No, I thought I was reading, you know, minutes for a discussion of the retail.
It says retail or dispensary, that's.
That's what I thought.
I don't think it's allowed there, plus it would have to come back for a site plan review, a special permit, so.
But it does bring me to my list.
That's a pretty narrow strip.
Any other business? And then, oh, next meeting. So actually, it's next, next, next Monday is our normal, but I don't think we need one. Did we already set a July? This was actually a special one, so did we move up the July meeting till tonight? Maybe that's what we did.
No, I don't think we did that.
I, I have the first.
We did this for Vesh.
For the two things, but I.
Oh, also, right, for the floodplain thing. We should also, am I the only one that was here for that? Oh, I am the only one that was here for that.
Oh, you mean.
I came at seven o'clock.
Oh, I was there.
Yes, Roger, let's talk about that. No, I'm just teasing him.
He's nine o'clock.
Because he showed up at seven o'clock as we were leaving. It was a three hour meeting.
What, the green space thing?
Should we just report on it?
Boy, can I guess. I didn't know that we're walking into that. That was like, I thought we were gonna talk about floodplain. But it was about incentives to build green buildings and stuff.
And change, and proposed changes to bike paths.
So did you talk about accessory apartments and stuff, or? No.
Well, we touched very briefly on that.
Did they really talk, I've been to a couple of seminars where they talk about green building, and I gotta tell you that I don't think the people know what, they don't have a clue as to what they're talking about.
Well, it wasn't, we separated it actually, incentive part we ditched, to be fully honest, or we separated.
What was that?
The incentive part, there were two sections to it, but.
Well, incentive, we, we dropped one whole thing where they were gonna allow a non, like a building lot that wasn't conforming, like, but if you did certain things, you could reduce that requirement by sixty feet. So you would, a lot that wasn't allowed to be built on, all of a sudden could be a building lot or a structure to go on it.
If you built something green.
Yeah, and I said, well, that's being less green, and so they dropped that instantly.
Yeah, that, well.
And then taller structures and.
If anybody wants to, I will, I'm happy to copy it. Yeah, and my notes are not, not very constructive.
Updated from January or?
Updated six, six, nineteen. But it wasn't, there were two sections to it, and the incentive part was less interesting. I think that's Roger's, Roger's pointing to, like, there, it just was not.
Well, but that's the only reason they're doing that, so you would build green, so it's a really important part of it, because now you could go above the, the non-pervious stuff, if you put on a, what do they call it, a, a green roof or a blue roof.
But that's part of the, that was part of the second part, which was the incentives.
Right, but that's what they're, they're not saying, yeah, but that's what they want, they want people to build green, Rachel, and it's gonna cost more money. So that's why they're giving the incentives, so it'll entice people to do it, because now they can have more impervious areas and stuff. So if you don't give any incentives, why are you gonna build green?
I totally agree, totally agree. But in the discussion that we had, the first part was totally different. The first part was to review amendments to site plan review, that included.
Oh, yes, site plan review, you're right, and it gave us, that was a totally different, there was two subjects.
Two subjects, and they were slightly related in that, you know, if you're, and if you think of some of the projects that we've worked on recently, you know, concerns about bike paths.
No, no.
Where bike paths are going or what.
The site plan review gave us more.
Tree inventory, a little more specifics about tree inventory.
That was good.
And none of it's, none of it, and that's why tonight, when he was talking about, to be feasible, like the feasibility clause, that's what was over and over again. And there were voices in the room that were looking for that to be removed, but that actually gives.
Well, they said about like trees, any significant tree, and they gave dimensions of trees. And Anne Mary, were you at that meeting, Alice?
No, I wasn't there.
You mean Paul?
Paul, yeah.
But it was good that we were there.
And it said that that tree wouldn't be removed or whatever, or, you know, if you could remove it, you know, and it was.
But if feasible, if feasible.
Yeah, and it was like.
Again, so that was, it was good, because I think that's why it was good that we were there, because you could get fairly excited about what you would wanna make landowners do, and it was important to keep in perspective what it was that.
So is it like, don't we have a thing in there about lid on low impact development that, for stormwater or something, like, trying to encourage it? But was not any, there's not any real.
That, for, for, for development, for.
It was cluster, I brought that, cluster development.
That was the one thing we found. We didn't find, one of the things that it exposed was that we didn't find our lighting restrictions in our, in our.
Covered by that?
Curve law.
Yeah, they're in there. Talks about how many rooms and business.
I know.
I've gone through.
If you can, if you can, send those along in a way. I found all the signed ones, and I found all, and I found the cluster.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, but I couldn't find the landing ones.
Because I know we had a moratorium on it, and then I thought we sort of did away with it, but Carolyn said after, if you can't have a moratorium forever, you gotta take a town meeting vote to do away with cluster development. A developer came in and was trying to pull a fast one.
It was a three hour meeting, I'm just saying.
All right, so we don't need to make this one a three hour meeting?
No, but that, all that stuff has to be brought up to the full board.
At some point, we need to, we need to, we need to bring this to, and I guess I should have asked Chris tonight. But it wasn't, it, to me, it felt like more, but it also was mostly just asking questions. It wasn't, it wasn't saying, oh, you can only, you have to have a bike path that's five and a half feet wide and excess, you know, in excess of blah, blah, none of that. It just said, if feasible, you can do this. If feasible, you can do that.
It was even like with major developments, if you have a impervious sidewalk, they would, you could get benefits from it. I forget what the benefit would be, but maybe everything could be closer, they could. Then if you created parks in the back.
Right, but again, that was back to the incentive.
Right.
That was the second part. The first part was like tree preservation, orientation of building for solar access. So there's no restrictions on orientation for solar access. It just was a provision that we were kind of allowed to ask the applicant. So what are you doing about solar access? Do you have any thoughts on it? Do you have any provision for building your, and then they could say.
No.
No. Quite honestly, but it, that's it, to the extent feasible, based on lot configuration and size. So to me, it was useful, because if you would go through on a site plan review, you would go through these questions, and you would consider them. And I feel like, so, that's all. That's what we talked about.
So what's the next steps?
Next step, he's got, he's gonna take all this into consideration and spit it out.
He was gonna revise some of it, because some of it was.
Spit it out on another revision, and we haven't seen it.
Chris.
So he's helping orchestrate this?
And Tim, I can't, he was there, and Judy, and they put a lot of good input into the meeting.
Yeah, it was constructive.
But yeah, it's, you'd have to have the whole board really to review that stuff.
Yeah.
So, next question, do we need to set a date for the next meeting?
Well, concerning was, say, it's the 25th, you wanna, we don't have anything pending.
Everything that's come into the office, I think we took.
You want us to set a meeting date of August 5th?
Yeah, but I know at one time we talked about doing something with the current, and maybe, I don't say we have to do it, you know, the beginning of July, but with.
Accessory apartments?
Yeah, accessory apartments was one, and then the, where marijuana is allowed to be grown. We saw issues coming up with that, and we said we need to do something and put a moratorium on or do it.
Why don't we do a July 8th meeting and just have an agenda to talk about, you know, placement of marijuana growth, place accessory apartments?
Right. Hourglass flag lines.
I think we should have one, but I don't think July 8th, I won't, might not be here.
Your flag line.
Well, what?
Oh, July 8th?
But non-conforming.
It's the Monday afternoon. That was fine.
No, it was fine, but.
But it was not a flag law, it's just I, I think that he made a mistake by doing it that way, because he's gonna get more, charge more property taxes.
Well, he might be.
We need also to look at solar specs.
And we're still on the air, so I won't even make a comment on that one.
Okay.
Okay, solar specs, we also wanted to look at that, that's another.
So we go not so much by how much power it puts out, but the size.
Yeah.
I agree. Square footage, like, yeah.
And then definitions now, I've got that on my list.
And one of the topics that I was thinking about too is, is also, you know, when we had a very large solar project that was totally out of sight, out behind John's house. You know, we didn't get a lot of grief about it, but yet when we had a much smaller project that everybody could see, or a lot of people could see, it was a lot more problematic. Now, is it discriminatory for us to say if, if a site is, takes up a hundred acres, but it's not visual, you know, is it more allowable than?
Well, it could be a couple of things. It could be because where, what type of land it was getting put on, you know, there, those, if you look at those two projects, one was, you know, like rock, and one was.
Well, I should take a picture, because there's a place on the way to Rhode Island, there's solar fields, you know, just like what you see in Sunland, these panels. And right between them, there's space a little bit for, there's like four rolls of strawberries all the way down. It's a strawberry.
The university tried doing that down on River Road to.
For the strawberries.
To incorporate solar fields into agricultural uses.
Pollinators underneath the solar.
I mean, the guy that has a farm stand next to my building has, you know, solar panels, you know, and it's right, he has the panels right up against his access road out to his strawberry fields. So it doesn't really take up a lot of farmland, and he gets the benefit of that.
Right, and it depends how the shadows and what you're trying to raise it. If it's just grass, you know, it isn't that big a deal.
Shadows is road, so it doesn't.
Right.
All right, so I agree. So what's the best date for that then? Because we could.
July 8th. Is that a good day?
Roger's not sure, that's the second Monday.
That's the second Monday?
The first.
I should be fine, because I was thinking the fourth, and I don't know, I don't have a calendar for me, I don't know how it falls.
Fourth is Thursday.
Thursday?
Yep.
So the eighth? Be a Monday.
Monday.
Well, that would be, it might not be around. Well, that would be, it might not be around.
Where would you be?
Where will I be? None of your business.
Really?
Yeah. Not, not here.
You'd be not here.
Okay. I mean, then, but then...
I don't, you can have the meeting, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just saying I might not, I might not be here, that's all.
But if, what if we set the 15th, would you know if you're going to be here then?
Probably I would be.
Can we do one more thing, too, Roger, that you're here? The CPC, do you want to stay on that? We need to get that.
Yeah, I do, and I, that was, yeah, one of the meetings I wasn't at, yeah.
Could you, could you say the words, what did C...
Community Preservation Committee.
Yeah, I knew it.
So good.
Well, I thought there was also the Capital Planning Committee, and I was like, which is, they both the same initials, I guess.
Capital Improvement, CI.
CI, all right.
All right, so Roger's our person?
And there was a, and I'll bring that up, because at one point, our board appoints those people to be on it, and I'm going to say, last year or two years ago, the selectmen said, they had the authority to put whoever they wanted on from our board on...
No.
Yes, they did, Kip, because I was on it, and they picked Rachel.
Right. I think that was confusing, that the select board picked Rachel from the select board, from the select board.
Yeah.
We picked you for the planning board.
Not for the capital improvement.
No, capital improvement.
What was it that we did?
That's for a CPC. I'm on a CPC, it's the same thing.
Same thing.
CPA is the, is the, that's the...
Aren't you on the capital improvement? Yes, and they, the select board appointed you to that.
Right.
And they don't have the authority to do that.
No.
Yes, we do.
What we're saying is they...
I don't think they do.
They have, we can appoint one from our board, yes, we can appoint anybody, just like this board can appoint anybody, like you.
Right, but you appointed her as a private person, not a planning board representative.
Right, right, yeah, that's why you vote on.
But that didn't, didn't happen, Kip, I'm telling you. I know it didn't happen, because I spoke the truth, and they didn't like it.
So, does anybody else have, does it matter 8th or 15th for anybody else?
Doesn't matter to me.
All right, let's do the 15th then.
Okay.
Paul's, a lot of Mondays, I think he can make it. All right, next meeting is July, next meeting in the planning board, July 15th, 7 o'clock here in the town offices, and we're going to discuss potential changes to bylaws, just an introductory, not a public hearing.
At 7:00?
At 7:00.
At 7:00.
Thank you, is there a motion to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So adjourned.